Good morning. Good morning and welcome to the Pauline County Board of Commissioners May 26, 2015, work session. Uh, this morning for invocation and pledge, Pastor Court Franklin with Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church, would you stand with me if you're able?
Good morning. Good morning. Let us bow before our Father God, we thank you for this day, this hour, this opportunity that we're allowed to come together in your name. Father, for you are protector, our provider, our sustainer. And Lord, we just thank you right now for this great country and this county that we live in. And Lord, as we are just celebrating our memorial day, Lord, we thank you for those who made the ultimate sacrifice that we might enjoy the liberties that we have today. But we ask that right now that you will bless all of our elected officials, our mayors, our judges, our district attorneys, Lord, continue, Heavenly Father, to give them the judgment, Lord, that you have as they guide your people. Lord, bless all of our law enforcements, our first responders, dear God. Continue to protect those who protect us, that we might continue to have a high quality of life in Pauline County. And Lord, we ask you to bless Heavenly Father, our board of commissioners, as they, Lord, as they come together, Lord, to make judgment and make rules, Heavenly Father, and make decisions that will affect not just them, but many who grow up in Pauline County. And Lord, right now, we just continue to ask that you allow us, Lord, to come together to discuss that was on our agenda, and Lord, that we treat one another with respect. And if we so happen to disagree, Lord, allow us to disagree without becoming disagreeable. And Lord, right now, we just ask a special blessing upon all of our youth who are graduating on this week, dear God, Lord, that you continue to allow them to be good and productive citizens of Pauline County. And Lord, right now, we ask you, allow us to minimize that which divides us and to maximize that which unites us, that all of us strive together for a better Pauline County. In the name of our Son Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That's a beautiful prayer. Thank you so much. Minutes, the May 12, 2015 work session minutes, and the May 12, 2015 board meeting minutes are available for your review. Uh, I'll remind you today that there will not be a meeting on June the 9th. I will be attending a water conference for Cobb, Marietta, and Pauline. Uh, the board of commissioners, now we'd like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Sergeant Brent Miller with the Pauline County Sheriff's Office. If you'll come forward and, uh, if that's your lovely bride.
Yeah.
Please come forward. Usually people say, "Well, I'm blessed."
I am, I'm blessed.
Thank you for being here. If y'all face that way, uh, Mr. Hunt's got a few words he'd like to say.
Chairman and the board members, Sergeant Miller is receiving this award through y'all, but also he's receiving his second lifesaving award through the sheriff's office.
Wow.
Um, and I'm gonna read this to you real quick, all right? I won't hold you long, Sergeant Miller. But we do appreciate you and want you to enjoy this time. You've done a good job. Who distinguished, Sergeant Brent Miller, who distinguished himself in the performance of outstanding service to the Pauline County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Pauline County. While assigned to the patrol division, Sergeant Brent Miller responded to a medical call where the patient was in cardiac arrest on April 18th of 2015. Upon arrival, Sergeant Miller made contact with a female patient who had no pulse and was not breathing. Sergeant Miller attached the AED to the patient to determine what needed to be done. Once the AED was connected, he advised no shock was necessary and to administer CPR. Sergeant Miller then administered CPR and the female began to sporadically breathe on her own. Sergeant Miller stabilized the female patient until EMS personnel could arrive on scene. Doctors and other medical professionals later stated that as a result of Sergeant Miller's lifesaving actions, the female patient survived. The singly, singularity, distinctive accomplishments of Sergeant Miller reflects great credit upon himself in the Pauline County Sheriff's Office, given under my hand in the city of Dallas, Georgia, this 18th day of May of 2015, Sheriff Gary Gouch, and he apologizes about not being able to be here this morning.
Thank you. Come on, come on up. Matt, come on up.
I'm able to get everybody in.
All up one side. You gotta slow. I'm sorry, Major.
That's all right.
Doesn't it come with a mail that people are gonna carry me on?
Yes, sir. Take this. Wait, wait, wait. Up, up.
Another angle.
Congratulations. Sergeant. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's the kind of makeup we have here in our sheriff's office. At least we find our partner. We're honored to have you in service. Thank you, Bill, very much. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask Court Administrator Frank Baker, uh, we're talking about felony drug court or accountability court. Uh, this thing has been off the burner, on the burner, off the burner, and back red hot now.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, board, allowing us to come back today on behalf of the Superior Court judge, especially Judge E. Bucci. It is back on the burner, very hot, and I wanted to thank our district attorney who's been involved with us on this side. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, for being along for the ride. He actually has gone on a field trip with Judge Bucci himself up to Woodfield County. So, I guess it was about a month ago he went. Um, there was another field trip, I guess about a week ago, week and a half ago, so that's, um, another step that we've made. But we had some really good news last week, so I wanted to come and share it with you. Um, and I provided some information to each of you on it. Last week, we received notice from the governor's office that Pauline has been given the opportunity for a grant of over $121,000 as a seed money to start this project. So where we're at now is formally coming back, and we'd like to do that at the end of the meeting. We'll submit a gen item request to come back at that time and give a recommendation as to whether you'd like y'all to accept the grant or not accept the grant. I think we're probably gonna ask to accept the grant.
Of course.
But it's up to y'all to do that, and we wanted to provide you with enough time so that you can, each of you can study it. And also, I want to thank Ms. Pollard. We have met with her last week and provided the same information to her. So this will give her an opportunity also to take a look at it and study it further. Um, and we're very excited about this. It's, um, gonna be primarily to help us with the startup court position. So we thought it was important to come back to you today and let you know where we're at with it. Um, and also, too, we want to be prepared when we come back and formally ask if we accept it, so we know a little bit more of what the, what the future holds as far as what we would need to continue to ask for at that time. I just want to reiterate something that Judge Bucci had said last week when we were here, and it was, I think it was last week if we were here. Um, we want to try to make sure that we don't come back at the end of that first year and, and ask for funding if we can at all possible. We want to try to get some more grant information and get some grants out there, and also tap into the Dade Fund, which is available primarily for that purpose only. So there's some funding available there. So we want to be very, very careful about future expenditures that we have on behalf of the drug court. If y'all have any questions at this time, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
Frank, is Judge Deal related to Governor Deal?
This is, uh... That is correct.
Thank you. It looks pretty promising, and the results, with what I understand, is a model court that y'all want to see, and they've had good success, so I hope that we see the same kind of success.
They, they really do have an outstanding program, and I know this guy, I'm sure for no purpose, but he might even, he wanted to share his observations up there. But it was very impressive to, to see them, and this last group that went up had a representative from the sheriff's office, and Mr. Driggers from my public defender's office also went, and they both had an opportunity to talk to their counterparts up there with the program, and so we got some really good feedback from them.
I think he's just here today to ask for your money, so...
Oh, okay. Well, we appreciate the time, thank you, and don't worry there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. District Attorney, I think you've got a presentation you want to make, and also feel free to add some comments in about, uh, the court, because, you know, if I understand correctly, you probably need an additional person maybe to help with that.
There will be. According to the governor, we will get an additional assistant district attorney if we have established a court, which is what we're aiming for. In the meantime, Steve Messenger, who is my chief assistant district attorney and who also handles all the drug tax force cases for my office after request of the drug tax force, will be the initial prosecutor who is assigned to the drug court. And I don't know how much y'all know about the drug courts, I don't know how much information you've had. What Mr. Baker didn't say that I thought was significant was that when we originally discussed the grant with the people from the governor's office, we were under the impression, and we were told it would probably be around $70,000, $73,000. The fact that it's $121,000 is, uh, very important and a significant increase and gives us the oxygen to get this thing going like it's supposed to be going. I did go on the first trip up to Woodfield County, Judge Partain, and I've known each other for 40 years. Actually, when he met Judge Bucci, he said, "Heck, I've known Dick Donlin since he was a beaten cop," which is true. Um, and Jack Partain was a brand-new lawyer in Atlanta. Now, he's a Superior Court judge, has been for many, many years up in Woodfield. And I was frankly impressed with the operation we went for, the team meeting in the morning in the state for the drug court. And then the judge was kind of up to have us to lunch and explain where the resources were and where the, more important as far as I was concerned, was where the information was available to us so that we could run an effective drug court in this county. I'm concerned and interested that it be an effective court, not just a hystern promise. I wanted it to really be something that works. According to Judge Partain, their recidivism rate is less than 25% of what the average recidivism rate is for other felony cases. That's a tremendous success, and he's had this going down for, I think, uh, 12, 13 years. Very successful. I appreciate the opportunity to come here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board of commissioners, to make a presentation. I've never done this. I'm always just reliant on my emails to you. I understand from some of our colleagues and the district attorneys, the 49 district attorneys in the state, that they routinely go before the commissioners and make presentations. Then Porter over in Gwinnett County says when he goes down to the commission meetings, the first thing they want to know is, "Hey, you didn't bring any more pictures, did you?" Because he's bad about bringing pictures of victims of crimes in Gwinnett County to show them something that, some of what they do. I'm very pleased that I have had the opportunity to have three of the five commissioners in my office, and I think I showed the video that we created that I ordinarily had brought here. So you see a little of what we do, and I really appreciate you having to come over and look at that. Um, I also want to say thank you for Ms. Pollard, to everybody that gets up here and says thank you. If I could put a raise for you with my budget, I would. But I think that's, I think that's their call. I, I only really want to emphasize a couple of things. Last year, I was told we were gonna have two new ADAs. We didn't get one. I still have a need for that position. Uh, one of the ADA positions I have is the domestic violence prosecutor, domestic violence, sexual assault unit. She started that unit with over 300 cases. We gathered all the DV cases and took them to her office, and it turned out to be over 300. That is where I need an additional ADA, someone to help her out. Uh, so you know, I won't need that position until November. I have a Rule 97 intern who has, has taken the bar in July. He's been a third-year practice act intern in my office for the last two years while he was at Emory, and, as a matter of fact, he's already tried three cases, two jury trials and a bench trial on one every one of them. Uh, he's coming back to the Rule 97 intern. I'll have him in office September, October. And the way it works is he passes the bar and he gets the job if you approve the position. But if he doesn't pass the bar, he's out because the Superior Court will only allow you to do the Rule 97 internship one time. Uh, but I'll have someone to fill that position until then, so it won't be the full, the eight months of the year.
When you say you want to do that one time, one time in a certain time period, or...
No, if you graduate from law school and sit for the bar, he has been a third-year practice act intern, which means he actually can practice as an assistant DA and do everything that an assistant DA can, as long as he's supervised. Once he graduates, he's no longer a third-year practice. He takes the bar and he comes with a certificate signed by the chief justice saying that we can square him in as a Rule 97 intern. He has exactly the same rights and privileges that a third-year practice does under supervision. But the way the rule reads is, it's only good ones. If you didn't pass the bar, then, and I've had two of them that were Rule 97 interns that had to come turn in their little pass card, and they didn't make it. Um, but I'll have that covered until that point. Um, the, the two things that I really want to emphasize, and I've discussed this with Ms. Pollard, and we've had talks about it, Mr. Collette asked me about hard numbers. I don't have hard numbers, but I'm gonna be, but Ms. Pollard will try to come up with hard numbers so you'll know. The two things I want to, to point out, first of all, you've all read, I hope you've read what I sent out to each of you, the administrative assistant that we've had part-time, I'd like to make that person full-time. I'm paying for her out of 5% funds. I'm also paying a part-time assistant district attorney out of 5% funds.
Explain that quickly, 5% funds.
5% funds are fees that are charged along with filing fees and fines that are distributed by the state. We average about $100,000 a year in 5% funds, which allows me to supplement any, to hire people that I need to work without going to the taxpayers and asking for it. It, uh, it averages about $100,000 a year, and of course, that's not guaranteed. But the other thing that money is for, what I use it for, is Shepherd Tourette's. I've given Shepherd Tourette's $50,000 of that money since I've been in office. It also goes, I made a check out to Child Advocacy Center last year, and also to the Court Department Special Advocates for $15,000 each. I'm gonna do that again this year. Now, 5% money is intended for a lot of different reasons, but that, those are the primary reasons that if we free that money up, I can do more things like that with the 5% money.
That's at your sole discretion, but you use it to help your whole court system?
It's, it's at my discretion so long as it is used for the purposes set out in the best practices handbook published by the Criminal Justice Board of the Council. But the one that I keep, seriously, I print out and keep on my desk is that this is what you can't use the money for. I want to be real careful. It's, it's pretty broad, but I can use it for a lot of different things, and yes, it is at my discretion. Um, those two things would be helpful to me. I'm paying them out of 5% funds. It is, it's a necessity almost to handle, well, it is a necessity to have them. I would like to have them funded by the county if that's possible. Uh, the ADA is retired from the Atlanta Judicial Circuit Board of County, so he doesn't have any need for benefits. Two things that I want most to make serious requests for is that the five-year-old women that y'all met last month who are the victim witness advocates, start out at salaries well below that which are paid to brand-new administrative assistants in the county. I would like to raise their initial, uh, in, initial salary to at least what we pay a new administrative assistant. And I'd like for Jamie White, who is the coordinator, who frankly does a job that I couldn't do. She not only supervises the upper floor and handles all of the courtrooms when necessary, but she also handles all of our quota and ballot grant applications. She, her workload is immense, and she is not paid according to the job that she does. I would like to see a pay scale established for those people, which is in concert with what they bring to the job every day. They all have degrees. One has more degrees than anybody else in my office. Uh, she's a law degree, two master's degrees, a bachelor's degree. Um, but she is paid only a very low salary. Most, well, four of the five are partially grant-paid, so it's not a big hit as you may think, as far as that's gonna be handled by the grant money. And that's, again, that's Pollard, and I will go over that and try to put the hard figures. Uh, but that, and establishing a pay scale for assistant district attorneys. One of the things I sent to you was a list of the nine employees that have left to go elsewhere for more money. Seven assistant district attorneys have left. Now, I can't start them. I asked the county to start assistant DAs and what they do in Douglas and Cobb, which is $49,500 a year. We started at $40,000 a year. I sell them the idea that we're the best office to work for, we're the friendliest bunch. We have nerve gun bites, I probably shouldn't have said that a couple of these words, but just any, any way we can to make it a pleasant place to work and we sell them. But what I can't do is say, "By the way, after two years, this is the increase you're gonna get," because there's no established pay scale, and I would really like to do that. And I think I said to either Mr. Crowell or Mr. Collette, I have one ADA that's going to hit two years during this budget cycle. So I only have one that's actually, I'm gonna have to be concerned about. But I'd like to be able to tell, I've got three others that have come along. I'd like to be able to tell them, this is the pay scale that the county has established for. Those are the things that are most important. I appreciate your considering all of that. I understand that county's not made money, understand you do not have a bucket full of money, and some of the folks have money. I'm trying to run it as, as effectively as I can. I will tell you that if I have my brothers, I can ask them for a lot more. These are things I need, not the things I would want. There are other things I can ask for, and why I want them and why they'd be effective. What I'm asking them, that the commission consider that these are needs in the office. The only other thing I'm gonna ask for, and I ask you, let me take out a wall in the office, but I don't think that's, I don't think that all worries, but I think, any questions? I can answer any question.
Do other counties that have a, a pay scale established, um, does it go for an entire career?
That's our goal, Commissioner. We like to think that people that come to us are going to be dedicated prosecutors. Everybody knows that I was in private practice 30 years before I became a prosecutor, but I have people in the office who have never done anything but prosecution. Um, our goal is to establish a pay scale so that we can keep them. Admittedly, there are people who come to the DA's office and the solicitor's office so they can get some trial practice and get acclimated to the courtroom who have never been in the courtroom before, and then they move off to private practice. And you can't, you can't tell them, "No, you can't do that." But we want to establish a scale so that we'll be able to say to the people who want to make a career out of prosecution, this is a good place for you. By the way, the state does have a pay scale, a rather elaborate pay scale, which I will share with Ms. Pollard. The starting salary for a state position is right at $39,000. Uh, but then those, you get state benefits that go along with that, which are slightly different, a little more significant to the county. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
You follow the instructions. The shorter you stay, the more money you get.
Thank you so much.
Under bid awards, none. Reports from committees and departments. Lieutenant Colonel Chad Hunt with the sheriff's report.
Good morning.
Morning.
The, uh, again, uh, the sheriff couldn't be in two places at once, so he asked me to step in for him, so...
You do the heavy lifting.
I, I wouldn't say that. This morning, sir, this, this isn't too bad. I've had a lot worse, so... Um, I provided y'all a copy of, uh, the report from the, uh, January 1st of 2015 through the end of April of 2015. Uh, just some of the highlights that the sheriff wanted to point out is, uh, the sheriff's office patrol, 965,776 miles, again, during the months of January through April of 2015. Total arrested was 1,406. 1,578 traffic citations were issued. 16,732 complaints were assigned for the months of January through April. Some of our high-volume calls were as follows. 1,259 alarm calls, 779 domestic disputes, 497 lockouts. For those that don't know what lockouts are, is citizens calling and requesting they lock their keys in their car, things of that nature. 2,168 subpoenas and civil papers served, 256 prisoner pickups, 1,315 suspicious incidents, persons, or vehicles, 793 theft by taking, burglary, and entering auto calls, 2,806 traffic stops, 290 DUIs, 1,176 warrants were cleared, 181 zone patrols were requested, and 529 juvenile incident reports. 208 were assigned to detectives, and 234 juveniles were charged during that time period. Those are the, the highlights of the report.
When we go back up to alarms, we've talked about this before, but how many of those alarms were false alarms? Because I, I think over in Cobb and Douglas, they have established, uh, there's a point where you have...
Yes, sir. After so many calls, you start receiving a bill.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, majority of the time, I can't give you a definite number, but majority of the time on alarm calls, you know, they're, they end up being false in nature. Um, I would have to do some research to give you a definite number on those. Uh, you know, occasionally, we do find open doors, uh, windows, you know, things of that nature, and a burglary has occurred, um, or maybe in progress. But, uh, we do have a lot.
If you could bring that back to us, that...
Okay, sir. I'll do some research and I'll get that number, and I'll be more likely to email it to y'all.
Any more questions y'all have?
Yeah, I had a couple, uh...
Yes, sir.
Prisoner pickups. Can you explain that?
Yes, sir. Um, those are, most of the time, are gonna be people that are in other jurisdictions in their facilities, um, that we have warrants on. So for instance, Douglas County, uh, they may have a person in custody there, and the individual may also be wanted by us. So in order to start the, the criminal proceedings on that individual, um, once Douglas County is finished with them, then we will go pick them up and bring them to our facility, where they'll be booked in, fingerprinted, and then, uh, the, the process takes place over here. Um, a lot of folks don't understand, so I don't mind explaining this, but, uh, when an individual has a warrant on them, if they're in prison from, through another jurisdiction or in jail in another jurisdiction, they have to be brought back to our jurisdiction and be fingerprinted in order for that to be part of their criminal history. Your criminal history does not start until your fingerprints have been completed and submitted. Okay, sir. I'll do some research, and I'll get that number, and I'll be more likely to email it to y'all.
Any more questions y'all have?
Yeah, I had a couple.
Yes, sir.
Prisoner pickups. Can you explain that?
Yes, sir. Those are, most of the time, are going to be people that are in other jurisdictions in their facilities that we have warrants on. So for instance, Douglas County, they may have a person in custody there, and the individual may also be wanted by us. So in order to start the criminal proceedings on that individual, once Douglas County has finished with them, then we will go pick them up and bring them to our facility, where they'll be booked in, fingerprinted, and then the process takes place over here. A lot of folks don't understand, so I don't mind explaining this, but when an individual has a warrant on them, if they're in prison through another jurisdiction or in jail in another jurisdiction, they have to be brought back to our jurisdiction and be fingerprinted in order for that to be part of their criminal history. Your criminal history does not start until your fingerprints have been completed and submitted to the state GCI.
My other question was, just interested in the incidents, suspicious incidents and DUIs. What percentage is out of county, folks, ministers?
Again, sir, I'd have to do some research for you on that. As far as, you know, folks coming through, if they're on the DUIs, if they're, you know, coming to one of our establishments and heading back to another jurisdiction, I would have to do some research on that for you, sir.
Maybe about in June?
I'll see what I can get together, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Cap, do you mind, Mr. Comstock, another speaking engagement? Can he go for you? Kelly, do you want to come forward now with an update on Richland Creek reservoir water supply program?
Thank you, your chairman. My name's Kelly Comstock. I am the program manager for the Richland Creek reservoir water supply program, and it's my honor to be in front of you today to give you an update on program activities. Wanted to point out that we were able to give this same update to the water and sewer advisory board last week, so they've been briefed on current status as well. Today's presentation, just briefly, want to touch on the permitting status of where we are in the 404 permit process, talk a little bit about the design and how that's progressing, give you an update on some of the current and planned financial planning that'll take place over the next couple of months, and talk a little bit about the ongoing and planned public outreach that'll look through as well. We were optimistic and hoping to have the 404 permit in hand at this point, but as we all know, the federal government can be a tough thing to estimate. We are very positive and we feel very good that the 404 permit issuance is imminent based on some recent activities that have occurred. First of all, if you recall, we completed the cumulative impact study map in October of 2014, and that was submitted to the Corps for review. That showed the impact of this reservoir was essentially negligible upon the entire ACT basin. The Corps came back to us in April asking for a couple of additional model runs to be run. They had originally wanted to do the runs themselves, but they found themselves without enough manpower to be able to get the models run. So we had Hydrologics to develop the actual basin model, run the additional models. Those additional criteria that they were looking for were under future conditions where the reservoir would have even less impact than our original model run. So it was very clear to us that they were basically going through and making sure they looked at every single scenario possible, even those scenarios where in the future Cobb Marietta's and others would have less of an ability to withdraw from Lake Alatuna. And under those situations, there would be more water in the river and more available for Richland Creek, so obviously less impact. Those runs were provided back in April, and obviously favorable results to the Corps. In early May, the Corps also came to us and requested feedback on current information on county water conservation and on accounting for water program performance. That was something that we highlighted in the 404 permit. However, they obviously wanted the most up-to-date information, so we were able to provide that information to the Corps as well. So we anticipate the Mobile Corps completing their review in the next several weeks is what we're thinking. They'll turn it back over to Savannah, and then Savannah will take a four- to six-week period to issue the 404s. That's sort of what we're looking for in the early summer timeframe is what we're looking for. Another thing that happened, since we previously provided you a briefing, was we received notification of a new threatened animal. The northern long-eared bat was listed as threatened. It is known to be in this vicinity. So as such, in the beginning of April, we moved forward to be able to assess if this was going to impact our project. We prepared an assessment plan, met with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to approve the plan, and actually, last week, we conducted the bat monitoring assessment from May 18th through May 24th. We had six nights where we had nine different sampling locations set out where they sampled along the pipeline and the reservoir itself, looking for this bat. We found dozens of bats, and I didn't realize this, but there are actually 14 different species within the state of Georgia. We found three different species. None of the bats that were identified were of the threatened, either the Indiana bat, which was already listed, or this cute-looking bat, as you would say. The northern long-eared bat, and you can see where it gets its name.
You also called down now, wasn't it?
We did, yeah. Commissioner Pownell and his son came out, and we had a very educational evening in terms of bat science. So the good news is, we did not identify any, so that means we can move forward with our plan clearing once the 404 gets in place. If this bat was detected, it would have affected the timeframe in which trees could be cleared. These bats hibernate in the caves in the north, and then they come down and roost in the trees between April and October. So if the bat was detected, they just don't want you to be clearing any trees during that timeframe. So that was very positive. We found that out over the weekend, that this was, this critter was not going to be issued 404s. So a brief, brief update on where we are in terms of the design process. The reservoir is currently at about 90% design. We plan to submit to EPD for permitting in June. It gets submitted to the safe dams department within Georgia Safe Dams Program within the state, and they take about a 90-day period to do review of the reservoir design. And as such, we anticipate bidding this project in late fall, and construction would start in the February timeframe. Because of the size of this project, there would be a delayed bid period of about three months to allow all the bidding contractors to adequately prepare their bids. The water treatment plant design is progressing. We're currently working on the 60% design milestone. It's scheduled to be issued in the July timeframe. Over the last period since we briefed you, the design firm has finished up the pilot testing associated with the project, and that is basically operating a miniature water treatment plant. It's been running for many months since last April, so over a year, and it's basically been collecting water quality data from the anticipated treatment process, the dissolved air flotation process, the lower pictures there, you can actually see those are trailer-mounted units that come from the suppliers, and then the filtration and GNC contractors is the upper picture there. We want to thank Cobb County Marietta Water Authority, who actually gave us the ability to operate this at the Wyckoff Plant, pulling water from Lake Alatuna, which will be the source of water supply as to what we're going to have coming from the Richland Creek reservoir. So the design will progress. Using these technologies, we plan to be at 100% completion in the design in January of 2016. We'll bid shortly after that, and then construction will start in the springtime of 2016 on the pump stations and the water treatment plant. Rawwater pipeline, we had an initial kickoff meeting with the design build team. We are awaiting the 404 permit to begin the design process. Because this is primarily in Bartow County, we don't want to move forward until we have the 404 in hand, so they're just sort of holding until that occurs. We did meet with the city of Cartersville to discuss the pipeline easement acquisition and the final routing that will take place. This routing was developed with input from Bartow County and city of Cartersville. They had requested that the pipelines stay off of Route 61 because of the importance of that roadway, and so that's how this original alignment was developed. The one change that may take place is in the vicinity of the Cartersville Airport. They are looking at potentially making improvements at that airport that would necessitate us shifting that rawwater pipeline a couple hundred feet, 100 feet to the east, so that we're not under a hangar or any other facility at some point in the future. So we've met with them, we've told them that we're more than amenable to make that relocation once they've made that change. So once we initiate the design process, we'll be in contact with them to finalize this round. The other work that's taken place is on the water distribution side of things. This is where we can, we'll treat water at the plant, and then we have to convey it down to the southern part of the county. You can see on this image, the purple area, the little purple dot is the very northern part of Paulding County is where the water treatment plant will be located, and we'll need to convey that water down to the southern part of the county. So the yellow highlighted pipeline is the pipeline that's been finalized and will be able to convey that flow. It'll be a new 36-inch diameter pipeline. There'll also be a pump station at the southern edge of that pipeline. And we've worked with PetroTech in developing the requirements here, and we'll move into the design of this component. This will be procured using a conventional design bid approach, so the first step will be hiring a designer who will design that pipeline, and we'll prepare an RFP, an advertiser that engineering selection in the next several months. Plan is to have this design complete in the summer of 2016, and construction will start in the late summer timeframe. That pipeline essentially goes from the plant down to Highway 278 and follows State Road 61 the entire time. And I think two commission meetings ago, you moved forward with the memorandum of understanding for state direct investment, and the plan is the state would pay for $15 million with all that pipeline as part of the SBI plan. One of the items that was brought up by the water and sewer advisory board, with all of this work that's going to be coming out, both design and construction, they wanted to really maximize the amount of money that comes out of this program, staying with local businesses, staying with local residents and opportunities. So our plan is to have a networking fair in the August timeframe, where we'll be talking about all of these different projects, from the reservoirs, the water plants, the pipeline, to try and get smaller local contractors in contact with those larger contractors that would be going after this work. And it doesn't necessarily have to be specific contractors associated with the program. There are a lot of other support services when you get several hundred people working on large programs like this, anything from restaurants to, you know, equipment supply to landscapers, you know, sort of rental companies across the board. So we're going to be reaching out to the local community to try and get people excited about this and have them come in and make the contacts necessary for them to be able to take part in the overall program. Little update on financial planning. There were two different actions that the commission took place two meetings ago, and that was to finalize the main loan revision, and that favorably changed the payback terms to where the county now does not have to begin paying back on those Jifa loans until you're producing water. So that's a great thing. You'll be able to be reaping revenue by the time you actually start to make payments on those loans. You also finalized MOU for $15 million for state direct investment. The next step will be an actual agreement, and that'll be coming in front of the commission in a couple meetings. The next step will be developing a financial plan, and as part of that, we're going to be finalizing the overall program costs. Now that we've got the reservoir at 90%, we'll be getting an updated cost estimate from that. We are also, the county is also working, looking at non-program CIP requirements. So basically, they want to make sure that they understand what the cost for ongoing CIP will be for capital improvement plan, improvements for the sewer side, and the non-program water side will be, so that when they understand what their future rates will be, they take all of that into account, and they're not setting rates at a level that won't be sustainable with these other improvements that are necessary. So over the next couple of months, we'll know what the total program costs will be, and that will allow us to evaluate the need for future funding and update the financial plan that RapTalis has been developing. They should have an update in June, July timeframe, and they'll be coming back to the board to give them, to give you an update on what we're seeing with that financial model, looking out 50 years into the future and planning these improvements. The final thing I just wanted to touch on was to give you an update on public outreach. We did initiate Richland Creek reservoir stakeholder communication implementation team. It's made up of several representatives, including Commissioner Crowe. Commissioner, we thank you for taking part in this. And we're beginning the planning process and outreach activities that will take place to really inform the public on this water supply program and this reservoir. The major outreach is going to begin following issuance of the 404, so that the ball will really get rolling. We have moved forward and briefed several of the other municipalities, city of Hiron, Cartersville, Braswell, and Emerson. We wanted to make sure that they understood the current status and where we are, so we met with those representatives and have given them information. We also did a little bit of outreach at the airshow as well, and we're continuing to focus on the website and driving people to the website. We've had a good deal of activity. We've had over 1,800 visitors since the website went on in October, and 80% of those visitors are new visitors to the site. There were 5,500-page visits, and the graph on the bottom sort of shows activity, so you can see in the April, in the May timeframe that we're starting to see more and more activity. So that'll continue to ramp up over time to give updates. I think we're going to issue one on the bats as well, so that people know exactly what happened there around the bat. So we can continue to see outreach taking place through the website. That's it. If you have any other.
Can you develop cards that jam out if anybody needs those, and hand those out, and they carry them straight to the website?
That's correct.
Do you frequently ask questions that somebody may have already asked you in the past, or they're on the site? Anything else?
That's correct. And the cards are not, the cards are intended for every contractor, engineer, anybody who's working on the program, so that if someone's out in the field, you know, someone resident comes up to a contractor and says, "What are you guys doing here?", that contractor doesn't have to make something up. You can give them a card, has very specific information about what the program is and in reference to the website, so there's a very uniform message, and the public is really getting engaged in that. So yes, to answer your questions, we've got frequently asked questions on the website. We've got description of the overall program and all of the different components. We've got contacts for the different contractors, engineers that are working on the program. We're also putting up information on the treatment process now that that's been finalized, so people can understand how the water will be treated, as well as several other things on the website. Any other questions?
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Then we have a cap of the policy, a budget update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Over the past couple weeks, a couple months, my world revolved around 2016 budget and preparation. There's been a lot of questions asked from the citizens, as well as from each of you. So what I wanted to do today is to kind of give you an idea of what's been requested. I believe I gave each one of you about a month ago a list of the personnel that was requested and the capital outlet that was requested. And in going through that, I have been able to make some reductions to those requests. Some of them have been in elimination, some by communication on my part back to the department, or some, the departments have come back and said, "You know what? I found another way to get this done." So it's been on both, it's been a two-way street. But what I wanted, the main focus I wanted to take today was to show you what's happening to our revenues and what could potentially be a problem, not this year, but next year or the next year, and more than likely will be a problem over the next three years. And if we don't start planning today, that problem will be larger than it will be then. I'm going to focus today on maintenance and operations. So you have three components to our property taxes, and you have debt service, which I don't anticipate a lot of change. You may be able to roll that back just a little bit. As you know, we've done quite a few refinancing this year, so we've increased that interest expense over the course, over the block of loans or the geo lines. Fire tax, the fire tax is used primarily to fund the fire department. You have a growing fire department, and you not have the stations that we need to meet the ISO standards. Each one of those stations is usually built with FLOST funds. It is operated with fire tax funds, and they're 24 hours, so your personnel is fairly significant cost to each one of those fire stations that you have. Currently, we have a fire tax of 3.1, and it is very close to requiring 3.1, especially to allow for integration. So again, today, I'm just going to focus on the MNO portion, which is our general operations for government. It includes general government, judicial, public safety, public works, health and welfare, and housing and development. And also, the capital equipment, over the past few years, we've had, we have been in what's been considered a recession, and so our property taxes have declined. In the beginning of that, In the beginning of that, in '09, we eliminated, held off on replacing any of our capital equipment, and we put Band-Aids on them. Some of those Band-Aids are coming off, and we're being forced to repair those. Some of those, we are sticking them back on as best we can. In 2015, we had a budget of $3.7 million in capital improvements, and a million dollars of that was for the water system to buy back to allow the GSP to go in water system building. And we haven't done that yet, so we probably won't do that in the 2015 budget. We'll probably do that in the 2016 budget when they get a little further along with building. The 2016 budget, the original request was about $3 million more. That's been reduced now to roughly $2.5 million. You'll probably have some expenses that'll come up that aren't included in that, that you'll have to take care of during the year, and it will be a use of fund balance. And with the way the property taxes, and you'll understand as I go through this presentation, that the increases, the capital improvements at this time are all being vested for out of fund balance. Over the past couple of years, which I will explain this as well, we have added to fund balance. You have a very healthy fund balance at this time. However, we're going to use, you budgeted $3.6 million this year. You're not going to use quite that much, but you're going to use fund balance in 2015. You will probably use fund balance in 2016. And therefore, our ongoing budget is not being provided for by revenues for that particular year. If you decrease from your savings each year, it only takes so many years for that savings to go away. Then you have to figure out a way to incorporate that into your revenues. So that's one challenge that you're going to be faced with. But for purposes of this, I'm going to focus primarily on operations, because you do have healthy fund balance, you are able to, and the understanding that I have from each of you is that that's the, and that's the route we want to take, is to use the capital and make some of those improvements. I mean, use the balance.
Those are one-time top purchases?
Those are one-time top purchases. But what the problem, what we, what we're beginning to see is that as your vehicles, over time, we're getting 200,000, we're approaching 150,000, 200,000 miles on a lot of those vehicles, and they need replacing. Like I said, we put Band-Aids on them. We're sticking those Band-Aids back on as much as we can, but some of them are dying. And just because you purchased a vehicle, one vehicle this year, you've got another one next year, and another one the next year, until we find a remedy for this problem, which, the remedy in a year isn't fixing the problem, it's keeping the Band-Aid on it. Some of this information is reviewed, so I'm going to kind of go a little fast through some of it. If you have any questions, or you feel like I skipped something, please bring that to my attention. In Georgia, property taxes, which property taxes in Polley County make up about 40% of our general income revenues. So that, we have increased in other revenues, and I'll explain some of those to decrease the percentage amount for property taxes. But what the perfect world, we are supposed to set our expenses, and then you are supposed to set the mill rate based on those expenses to be able to cover the cost. Well, the taxpayer bill of rights kind of doesn't, it hinders that a little bit, in that if you collect anything more next, this year than you collected last year, it's said to have a tax increase. So you have to advertise through, you have to advertise and hold through public hearings for a tax increase. So it kind of makes you work that opposite of the way it's supposed to be done. You take what you had last year, and you say, "That's all I'm going to have", and you make your expenses match your revenue. And the tax digest, we have a gross digest, which is anything before exemptions, but I'm just telling you this just in case I mention it throughout, so you'll know the difference. And a net tax digest, which is the value that remains after your exemptions. So, and a mill is a dollar per thousand of assessed property. And an example of that is if you have a $100,000 house, it's assessed at 40%, so that would be $40,000. You're going to pay taxes on $1 per thousand of that for a mill. So a $40,000 assessed property would be $40 per mill. You calculate the same way for your individual properties as I did. So I take the total tax digest for the county, which I'm going to show you what that is in just a moment, multiply it by the mill rate, and you get your tax levy. You do that the same, I do it county-wide, individuals do it on an individual basis. Your rollback rate, we just discussed that a little bit. That just says that you can't collect taxes, more taxes this year than you collected last year as a result of your assessments. You have to roll back the millage rate to collect the same amount as you did. Or you have to advertise through public hearings. You have to hold through public hearings and advertise tax increase. Okay. This may be a little bit, and I've got a difficult read, and I've got a graph that will show you. I've gone back 10, actually, I've gone back 16 years. The reason I did this is to give you a real good idea of where we are as far as the tax digest. Currently, in the 2015, your net tax digest is 3.5 million. So our, the taxable value is 3.5 million per mill. If you look back at '05 and '06, '05 was less than that, '06 is a little bit more. So that's where you're at, is your taxable value has taken quite a decline, and then it has increased some, and we're back to '05, '06 values. Then you multiply that value times your millage rate, and I've got on there what your millage rate has done, over that 10 years. And then you have a net levy. So if you, we're collecting, our net levy is at 23 million if you roll it back in this coming year. You roll it back, you're going to collect 23 million, and that's at 100%. And that's just less than what you were collecting in '06. This gives you a graphic of that. It just shows kind of what the tax digest has done over the past 11 years. You're currently down in value about $754 million. So we're doing $754,000 is what you're actually collecting, less than you were in '08. Does that make sense? Mr. Crowe, you're giving me a little funny look.
Just scared.
It is, it is scary, and I think it's something that you need to see and understand. Okay, so if I multiply that digest, multiply this digest, times the millage rate, that gives you what we're actually, what the net levy is. So in '08, it was 27.9, and 2015, it's going to be 23, is what your property tax net levy will be. This gives you a picture of what it's done together. So if you, this, the, oh, sorry. The graph, the blue bars are your net digest, and it shows you how you increased, and then you've taken a decrease, and now you have begun to increase. All of this in between is what you have multiplied by as the millage rate. So up here, you were at 6.5, 6.5, 6.5 roughly. Then as this declined, you had to increase your millage rate, increase your millage rate, but you weren't collecting any more taxes. And now you're decreasing your millage rate, this is increasing, and you're still not collecting any more taxes. So it just shows you what the trend that we've had over the past few years, and we have rolled back each and every year, rather than increasing even what we were in '08 So what are our revenues and expenditures done? Because in, as a result of some of that decline, we did go through and reduce our revenues as much as, I mean, reduce our expenditures as much as we could. So around the '09 era, we began to reduce that number, and we reduced it, this in 2014, was because we put off as much as we could put off, and we didn't make those, some of those purchases until the next year. And that's why that, you took a dip, and then you kind of increased back up. What we want to see in a perfect world would be to have these numbers run side by side. As you can see, my expenditure line is just above my revenue line. That gets you in trouble over time, so you want to, you want to put the revenue just under, just over the expenditure line. This, this is as we have a budget currently. And as each of you know, we're required to publish a budget June 1st, which will be next Monday by 5:00. We'll have a budget published. It's to the public for review. We will be required to hold a public hearing, and then we will adopt it in August. So we still have some time to get some input, it's just, this is just the beginning to show you kind of where we are and what to expect. Okay. So over this time, as you can see, our revenues have, they took a little bit of a dip again, and we just talked about why revenues from property taxes decreased. So, but this numbers, this chart increases just a little bit. So I'm going to show you why that increase has occurred. And in doing so, the 2010 census, when we, in 2000, our census was, I believe, 86,000 roughly in the census and population. And in 2010, we went to 142,000. Some of our revenues, such as the insurance premium tax, for instance, is allocated to us based on, based on your population. So from 2000 to 2011, we were given the insurance premium tax based on 86,000 people, even though we had more than that. In 2012, they began to use the 2010 numbers, which increased that amount significantly. So we did have that additional revenue. And we have increased some, and our franchise tax has increased slightly, but then you have court fines and fees, those have decreased. So you have some ups and downs. The biggest source of revenue that we have incurred has been the title at war on tax. And this was implemented March 1st of 2013, and the intention is to eliminate the birthday tax for all of our vehicles. The sales tax was, you were given an exemption for sales tax on vehicles in this reform, but you were given a 6.5% title at war on tax, which each year has an increasing component to it, and currently it's at 7%. The intent of that is to offset your, your adware on tax. So you get a decrease, then you pay this, this 7% tax, and you no longer have birthday tax. That was a scary thing for all of us, because we didn't know what would happen with it. Will it stop vehicles purchases? Will it make people buy more? Will it make people buy less? It was assumed at the time it would make people buy less. Currently, it doesn't seem to have done that, or as people are opting in, we have increased that revenue. So if, if it is that as people are opting in or making those first purchases, we assume an increase in revenue. But that could see, you could see a decline, depending on how that trend continues. There's no history, so it's hard to project as to what, what happens. In 2013, we saw revenue of 1.1 million. In 2014, we saw revenue of 3.6 million. And in 2015, I anticipate about 3.9 million. And I'm assuming that in 2016, we're going to have the same, that it won't increase the whole lot. I think we have to level off with that. I don't think people are going to buy a lot more vehicles just because they can. Some are going to wait, want to get the value of that title at war on tax and not want to pay it all at the front like they've had to do with purchases that they've made now. What's happening is now the adware on part of your tax digest is decreasing significantly. So over the next few years, well, this year, last year, we had a reduction in your adware on tax of $60 million, which equates to about $443,000 to your budget, to your digest. And in 2016, you have a reduction of about $73 million, which equates to about $533,000 reduction to your overall revenues in property taxes. So what I did was I took the total value and multiplied it by 6.509, because that's what your rollback rate will be, and you're going to lose 1.3 million dollars over the next few years from your property taxes, because those people, as they change vehicles, that is going to come off the adware on tax digest, because they pay title vehicle adware on tax at the time of first vehicle. Does that make sense?
There was something also in there that traded cars on individuals, so was not paying any tax. And to make up this difference, according to the legislature, if a person sold a Tonya car in the past, there was not a tax on that, no.
That's correct.
And so that's supposed to make up this difference, is your saying?
It is, it is. That's where some of your increased revenues coming from. Now, as, will those vehicle trends continue, or will you, now, now, when you go to the tax commissioner to register your vehicle, a new card, you just bought it, you just bought a vehicle from me, and when you go, you have to pay 7% when you get there. And add that 7%, then you don't have to pay the birthday tax. So will you buy a vehicle again in a year or two years and pay that 7% again? Or will you hold on to that vehicle for four or five years until you have really received the value for that tax that you paid?
But actually, last year and this year, or simply next year, the TVAT tax will occur, and the increase, the decrease may have more.
The increase is higher, but you also have to consider that you took, you had a 1% local option sales tax that you don't, you no longer collect on vehicles. So that is about $500,000 a year as well. You have a SPOSS reduction, because that percent is exempt as well, because when you purchase a vehicle, you no longer pay sales tax on that vehicle. So your lost tax reduced, and your SPOSS tax reduced. Now, then the state charges you 7%, and that money is allocated back to each of us based on that, on the 1% lost and the 1% SPOSS. So that part of that 3.9 million is as a result of the loss and SPOSS that you have lost.
Which is not reflected on this.
Which is not really reflected on this screen, but you just have to, you have to take that into consideration. So now, the, what I wanted to do here is to kind of give you an idea of how the rollback is calculated. And the idea of the rollback, this is your reassessment number. So the tax assessors goes through, and they take all the value of all of our properties and compare it to sales that have occurred, and reassessments to some properties occur as a result of those, those sales and the value, the assessed value at the time, on January 1st. So the idea of the rollback rate is to assume that this reassessment did not occur. So 7.1, from 7.267 down to 6.509 eliminates this, this value. And you put that on homeowners. And you put that on a homeowner's perspect, and a homeowner's perspective. If you have a hundred thousand dollar house and it's valued at, value of a hundred thousand dollars, assessed value of forty thousand dollars, then you're paying tax on forty, forty dollars per thousand. Last year, at 7.267, you would pay 290 dollars. Okay? If you assume, this has, is an 11% reassessment increase roughly. So that hundred thousand dollars house is now at 111,000 dollars. So your tax is at 44,400 dollars, which if you roll back to the 6.509, that tax is going to be about 289 dollars. So that's the, the intent of rollback. Most of the time, this is, this value is 59.2 million dollars. It is new construction. So that's new buildings that have come into the, into the county. Residential, commercial, whatever it may be. Normally, and you should be able to, in the past, up until this year, we have seen an increase to the amount of money that we were going to collect because of that 59.2 million dollars. This year, you're not going to see that. And the reason being is because of that seventy-three thousand, primarily, is because of the 73,000 dollar reduction that you're seeing to the, to the auto adware tax. And this is the amount that will eventually go away. And that's the 1.3 million dollars that I mentioned earlier, decline that you're going to see over the next few years. So this year, rolling the mill rate back will cost you 241,000 dollars, less than what you received last year. And that is primarily because you don't get an increase from these other changes. This is just the same graph that we saw earlier, except for you had some additional expenditures, included transfers. Debt service was paid in this year out of operating. So you saw, you saw a spot there again. You want those, now, those with, with a fund balance, as a healthy fund balance, you want to see your revenues and expenditures should equal. That's what a balanced budget is. Your revenues equal your expenditures. Okay. Currently, for the 2016 budget, we have proposed revenues of 57,337,500 dollars. That is up 2 million dollars from last year's budget. It is the same as what we're going to receive. We're actually, our title of adware tax did continue to rise. This year, I don't, you know, I, I do anticipate it leveling off. I don't anticipate as that adware tax goes down. I mean, yeah, the adware tax draw. That number's not going to continue to rise. We've had something similar last year, 3.6 million. We got 3.9 this year. And anticipation of 3.9 again next year is hopefully conservative, but it's not over. Expenditures, if, I went through the budget and I didn't give anybody anything that they asked for, which is left expenditures the same. Keep in mind, the rec, the increased personnel that you added last year was for a partial year. Your pay increases went into effect in October, so you had 75% in the year. Well, in those, in 2016, you have a full year. So those just increased by about 25% in 2016 before you ever even started a budget. So no, no additional requests. You have 56.4 million, leaves you with a difference of about 900,000 dollars. If I give everybody everything they asked for, that's almost 2 million dollars, 1.8 million dollars, you are upside down 888,000 dollars. And you haven't given a single raise yet. So, um, that's kind of where the budget standard now is. I have, I have tried to find a midpoint with the requested, and I have reduced it to about a million dollars for new personnel. Those are primarily in public safety. There are a few areas in general government that you have to consider. One thing, as Mr. Donovan mentioned earlier, he has, he has pay scales that aren't what are comparable to other areas. That's countywide. That's a problem that every department in the county has. We have some of our public works departments, our water system equipment operator, and our DOT equipment operators, those are competing. They're, they're competing with each other. So we have to, employees that leave one, they go to the other, do the same job, and they may, they may make a little bit more money. What we would like to include in this, which could be a capital purchase, is a salary study. Where do we compare? How do we, how do we stand at other counties? If we do that, but last year, we had a, we didn't receive a proposal. It was in the amount of about 75,000 dollars to do this. It would probably cost us somewhere between 75 and 100. But we did not do it last year because we could not afford to fix the problem. We knew that there, we know there's a problem there, but we didn't have the revenue to, to fix it. We're being pushed, we're going, you're losing employees in some areas to other jurisdictions. And it's probably in our best interest to do this and then develop a plan to implement. You will not be able to fix it all over time, but it's a starting point and it lets you know where you stand. We may be strong in some areas and weaker in other areas. And it shows us, it would show us where and how we can fix those. If we do that, it's going to put a burden on your HR department. So your HR may have to have some additional help, either temporary or permanent, to be able to do this. That's one area in general government. Your judicial, so in our court system, this is Mr. Donovan's request. This is your public tender's request, your probate request, your court of court request, your general judge request. They have about nine additional people asked for. They also have some additional pay increases for specific jobs that everyone's seeking. Those, we would know if they were warranted or, you know, if we were able to get evidence or warrant for those if we had this, the salary study. We have a lot of department heads that feel like some of their staff are overlooked, and some are. It may be that they don't need additional money, but we have workloads to give for those people. Public safety, I have about 13 additional requests. Public works, I have five additional requests. And recreation just had a part-time to full-time. And a little, in a slide or two later, I'll show you how some of the workloads changed over the past few years and how they take notice. Done more or less. Your use of fund balance, this goes back to capital. Fund balance policy, you can't balance operational, an operational budget using your fund balance. You, you must have, revenues must equal expenditures. And if you're going to use fund balance for capital, you must have a plan in place. So this, this is a multi-year plan. It's not anything that you have to do this current year, but you have to know that there's a problem surface. 2014, your fund balance was 30 million. And your 2015 had a use of 30 million, or you will use 3.3 million. So you've got 27.8 million. You're recommended, this gives you 33% of your budgeted expenditures. And I believe I do 60 million for that, because we're just under that. But you will get, we're, we're basically approaching 65,000 dollars. That leaves you 8 billion to work with. And if you use 3 billion in 2016, 3 million in 2017, you've got three years before a problem, a serious problem presents itself to you. Because I went back to property taxes from 2005 is the reason I picked up the 2005 numbers. Your population in 2005 was estimated at 118, currently at 1.6. Per capita was 23,000, currently 38. Your unemployment is increased from 3.6 to 7.8. Your general government, your employees, you've decreased. Judicial's decreased. Your public safety has decreased some. Firefighters have increased. Sheriff's office has increased. Public works has decreased, and your homeownership protection has decreased. So culture, recreation has increased by two. However, if you look at the bottom, we have added quite a few parks and quite a few, quite a bit of acreage for parks to maintain, for them to only increase by two. And what they requested this year was part-time. Some of your pile volumes, that's where some of the, the demand has, has hit over the past few years. So that's all I have. The workload has increased. You know, my main point today was to let you know what happens with your revenues. And if, the easy thing to do would be to, you know, give everybody the request that they've asked for, because they, it's, it's not, nobody's asking for something that's just outlandish. You know, our requests are fairly typical from year to year. They do, they get, if they don't get it, somebody else has to carry the load. But if you do that, it comes with a cost. If we want to continue to roll the mill rate back, we're going to be back at 6.5. And we were at 6.5 quite a few years ago. And we're seeing, we have seen a boost in revenue, but we potentially could see over the next couple of years, somewhat of a difference.
Oh, wow. At one point there, again, we've decreased some things by a million dollars, but I think you and I discussed, we were talking about different times to hire people. And Mr. Donovan had even mentioned that, that he didn't need that one position until November. Fact of the matter is, that's the second money in this budget.
But it's going to cost you next year. So like your expenses this year went up 20, your personnel expenses were, anything that you added last year went up an additional 25% this year, at least. And it will be the same then next year.
While you've been in your job, Tabitha, have you ever had a salary study? Has the county ever done a salary?
We have done a salary study.
Did one in the early 2000s.
Early 2000s, I think, we did one. But if you recall, the sheriff's offices, um, over the past few years was, well, they were in a bomb, and they were losing people to other jurisdictions. And they needed to give those, we didn't give raises for so many years. And we even asked, employees gave furloughs, and they gave back up to 10 days in a year. And what happened was those people began to, others, other, smaller jurisdictions or some similar size were able to pay them at a higher rate. So it was worth it to them to freeze a few positions and be able to increase those pay scales. Well, that's not only in law enforcement, that's happening all over the county. Maybe not to the scale, but that's primarily because that's who has the most employees. So we still have the problem, and it's, it's a growing problem. If you don't use them, it's going to continue to be a problem.
Last year during the budget, I know the commissioners that were up here, we, we discussed, well, we discussed several things with you individually, but even during that meeting, I know one of the things we talked about was we can roll back that this year, but we can't continue to do that sometime. It will cost the government.
A shot.
So I, I know that, I, I think that was one thing last year that the tire board agreed on, that we could work on that, but it was especially to catch up with us.
And that's the case again this year.
Yeah.
You, you can manage, this year you can manage. But there is a cost to it, and it is coming your way before most of you are finished with your term.
And Tabitha, if we did this, how long has that been good?
Well. It's take, it was, I understand it would take at least 12 to 18 months to complete. So, and we did the other one in early 2015, and it's created problems. So 10, 15 years?
Because there's anticipation in there with percent increases and those type of things. So there are some assumptions based inside the study, which is good. Any other questions, Tabitha? I, I think the public can see what an asset capital is. Two words day and night on this stuff, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, great.
Just hearing your promotion, the department group.
Okay.
There's a five-minute break. We'll be right back.
He isn't going, but he's a nutcase, just like his daddy.
Excellent presentation, Tabitha. Thank you so much. Public participation on agenda items, there's no one wishing to speak. Consent agenda, we have one item. Approved intergovernmental agreement with the Paul and Candy, two districts, two buses owned by the district to provide transportation for children participating in certain recreation events built by Paul and Candy Parks and Recreation and Park and High Water. Shortest agenda of the day. This is an agreement that we do each year with the school system. It allows us to bus and need qualified driver, transporter, summer day camp kids on some of the good trips. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get a lot of money, of course.
You ought to get a lot of money. Big dollars, but you follow your language. Would you like to move this item to regular session? Do you hear none, old business, none, new business? Public hearing on the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Chad, if you want to come forward?
I can keep it real short, sir, and I won't come up at all.
Thank y'all again. Have y'all received a copy of this, sir?
I did.
Okay. Did the rest of it?
Yes.
If not, I'll make sure.
Is it there?
It isn't?
Yeah, okay.
All right. I just wanted to make sure, if I need to, I could leave you with, leave you one before we left today. We referred to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application, or the, the grant itself, we call it the JAG grant. So if I say that, you'll know what I'm talking about. This year, we've been allocated 13,981 dollars. We're still in the application process, this is part of that. With those funds this year, what we're wanting to use them for, one item is a big ticket item, is our, we call it a heavy tactical blanket. It falls under the, I apologize. Under the grant, it falls under the body armor, under the tactical side. This will mainly be used by our special weapons, like weapon, for the, for the team. The blanket in itself stops rifle rounds up to a 7.62 millimeter, which is your standard for, as far as deer hunting rifles around here that we come in contact with if we're dealing with, you know, somebody that's shooting at us, which has happened in the past. We do have one of those blankets at this time, but it has, it has gone past its lifespan. I can't tell you how many times we've used it. We've used it multiple times. We've used it multiple times. It's a beast, it's heavy. Um, it actually comes in panels. Uh, the small panels are bolted together, which can, uh, you can do it within a matter of seconds with three or four operators. Um, or you can use them individually if necessary. Uh, so it's multi-use, uh, we can attach it to a vehicle. Uh, we've attached it to a van, uh, in the past, uh, while we were evacuating citizens from a, uh, hot, a barricaded subject with a, with a firearm, we were actually getting neighbors out, so we were able to use it for that. So it's a very versatile item for us. Um, the second part of that grant, the rest of the funds, would actually be used to, uh, purchase new optics, uh, for our rifles that we currently have. The, we do have right now night vision capability, and the optics that we currently have are fourteen years old, and they are well past their lifespan, and they are starting to go down on us. So we're having to look at, uh, updating our optics on our, on our weapon system, um, that has the night vision capabilities, in case that need arises, so. So we're also looking at purchasing those as well.
I think we're looking, you don't provide weapons to do your job, so I don't, I couldn't see anybody being opposed to that, and at this time, I will, uh, open up the hearing. Uh, do you want to come forward and speak on this? Here are none, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Yes, we need any action taken to receive this grant? We'll do that, vote on that tonight. Thank y'all so much, you very much. Number two, discuss action authorized the chairman institute an intergovernmental agreement regarding provision, provision, billing, accounting, maintenance, and sewer service within the boundaries of the city of Hyrum. Forward.
Fat girl.
Yeah, we need a fat woman out, you with me out there.
The, um, in your package, you have a draft intergovernmental agreement with the city of Hyrum. The city is, uh, wanted to provide sewer service. It's a public health issue, um, and, and, uh, to promote public health, safety, and welfare, um, to areas in and around the downtown Hyrum area. The, uh, the intergovernmental agreement provides for Hyrum doing the design and construction of the, um, of the sewer improvements, um, and that conveying flow to our existing system. They, with Pauline County would then own, operate, and maintain that sewer system as part of its infrastructure. As far as billing, Hyrum will be responsible for billing the city residents, who are also their water system customers, um, and they will trans, transmit payment to us monthly. The, uh, before a customer is connected to the sewer system, one of the things that we want to make sure is that we have that ability to do a capacity analysis and make sure that we have capacity downstream and through the treatment systems to provide that service. So they will provide notice of proposed connection to the sewer system, um, for our capacity verification before they accept them as a customer. Uh, they, the, uh, their fees will be based on our fees. They may also, they have the ability through the intergovernmental agreement to also add Hyrum, uh, administration fees to those. It is, uh, a term, the term of it is a fifty-year agreement. Uh, it, the improvements, one of the questions we were asked last week at the Water and Sewer Advisory Board was about, uh, warranty, and it, the improvements carry our standard of improvements, uh, required by any of our developer projects, which is a one-year, uh, materials warranty. The, uh, Water and Sewer Advisory Board reviewed this at their meeting, uh, last Wednesday, and voted unanimously to recommend, uh, the intergovernmental agreement to the board.
We have Mayor Davy here, and, uh, she's in agreement with that. Uh, any questions you have with the board? Well done, thank you very much. Number three, discuss action authorized the chairman enter to an actual cost utility relocation agreement with the Georgia Power Company for re, reimbursable utility relocation expenses associated with the South Main Street Improvement Project in an estimated amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. Alors, far forward.
I did pass out an updated copy of the agreement, uh, in the last minute submittal. We got some handshakes on there. The terms are the same. Do you have any questions on the slide addressing?
Please, please, set the spot, if you have any question. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of a regular business meeting, a detective session, public participation on my agenda items. Chris Byrum, Airport Authority Meeting, tele and Board of Commissioners meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, I would like to speak with you about my thoughts regarding the location of the Airport Authority meetings. Last week, at the Authority's monthly meeting, the board voted unanimously to continue holding their meetings in the boardroom indefinitely. The reason specified by Chairman Thompson was security. He stated that with all the things that have happened to him and other board members in the past two years, he does not feel safe having the meetings moved back to the airport, since there's no security as there is at the administration building. Words cannot express how offensive his accusations were to me and other airport opponents, especially those of us who religiously attend the Airport Authority meetings, the IBA meetings, and the board meetings. Clearly, we are an inconvenience to those whose agenda is to move forward with commercialization despite public opinion. But to imply we're capable of criminal and terroristic activity is beyond insulting. Several months ago, after the airport opponents were publicly accused of committing a crime against an airport proponent, Sue Wilkins contacted Sheriff Gullwich to speak with him about the situation. The sheriff told her that he receives complaints from both sides of the airport dispute, each accusing the other of committing crimes against them. He assured her that he does not think anyone is guilty from either side, but instead that these are nothing more than random crimes. Sue also spoke to Mr. Underwood after he resigned from the Airport Authority regarding his reason for leaving the board. He assured her the mishap was not caused by anyone from our group who attends the meetings, and it was only part of the reason he resigned. Yet fingers are pointed and our reputation discredited, all because our interference is an inconvenience. We are belittled and ridiculed for taking an active part in our local government, who has violated our rights. Is this response that we so often receive not a mockery of what we honored our fallen soldiers for just yesterday? Needless to say, I, along with many other residents, believe it is in our best interest and the interest of this county to move the Airport Authority meetings back to the airport. If security screening is what the board needs to feel secure, portable handheld security scanners, which are used at both the administration building and the courthouse, are a viable option and should more than suffice. In the event this board decides the authority can continue holding meetings here, then at the very least, as a Pauline County taxpayer, I firmly believe they should pay for the rental of this room and the cost for the marshals. Holding the meetings here costs the taxpayers, and since the terms of the IGA clearly separate the authority and the county, there's no reason the taxpayers should be picking up their tab. We're on the hook for enough. So the Airport Authority needs to live up to their responsibility by adhering to the terms they've implemented in the IGA, no matter how inconvenient it may be for them at times. On behalf of my fellow residents and taxpayers, I ask this Board of Commissioners to make the final decision as to whether the Airport Authority continues to, to use this room or not, since it's your house, not theirs. And if you choose to allow them to continue, I ask that you be fair to the taxpayers by requiring the authority to pay for the privilege. Thank you.
I would request, um, that, um, I asked the request to be, be held here, and, uh, part of it was after my home was broken into, and part of it was after it was said on Facebook how it looked for gray matter to be splattered, uh, in the airport. Now, I, I think it gets tense, and I think, uh, uh, there's moments, uh, that, you know, a screening device is something that we did here mainly, uh, for the tax commission. There's a lot of, uh, people get upset during that, and so we were asked to provide that. After the legislature gave authority to bring guns into, uh, government buildings, if it was not allowed, and so that's why we put in the screening device. Uh, but, uh, on, on this board, I'm the one that sits, uh, on the Airport Authority, and I would be the one that they would target if, uh, somebody decided to do that. So I think it's just a precaution that we do here, and, uh, with that being said, we'll move on to Ms. Kathy Hales, intergovernmental agreement for Pauline County, Airport Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I know you're probably tired of me getting up here, meeting after meeting to talk about the intergovernmental agreement. I'm pretty tired about that too, so. But it's difficult for me, as a taxpayer, to allow an un-elected authority to have the power to raise my property taxes with no input from this Board of Commissioner or my post-to-commissioner, who represents me and the residents in the airport. I attended the Pauline County Airport Authority meeting last week, and was surprised and shocked that members of the authority didn't really know what one thirty-nine certification is. And no, it's not nine to thirty passengers. It's a whole lot bigger than that. Our airport's capable of letting seven thirty-sevens and MDAs. They can carry up to a hundred and thirty-plus passengers, which is exactly what Propeller, also known as Silvercom and Terminal Partners, and the airport director have in mind, and that is what requires the one thirty-nine certification. How can someone vote in favor of something and not know what it is? I heard Mr. Timmore say it was complicated, and he would prefer to explain the one thirty-nine certification. False line. What does false line mean? Is that so the public can't hear? Is that, that why he wants to discuss that false line? Shouldn't this be discussed in open, honest, and transparent manner as we were promised in two thousand and four? You know, no gray areas is what we were promised. This was going to be open and above, with press and everything. That's what we were promised. Remind us again how long ago that forty-year lease was signed? Did it ever occur to the members of the Airport Authority Board what one thirty-nine really means, and shouldn't they have found out? This is exactly why I have objections to this intergovernmental agreement and the one thirty-nine certification. Allowing non-elected members of an authority that have no idea what they're voting on is irresponsible. I don't claim to know a whole lot about airports, but apparently, neither do most members of the Pauline County Airport Authority. They refuse to even discuss compromise regarding the amendment Commissioner Pauline County presented last week. Why? Since they don't want to find common ground, and since it appears they know little about one thirty-nine certification and what's involved, even though it's been almost three years, I ask this Board of Commissioners, again, to do everything it can to rescind this intergovernmental agreement between the Pauline County Airport Authority and the Board of Commissioners. Today marks six hundred days since the announcement on October fourth, two thousand and thirteen. We still don't have one thirty-nine. I have a feeling this will continue for another six hundred times ten more days, or perhaps longer, unless this IGA is rescinded and that one thirty-nine is tossed aside. And I won't stop until that's done. Thank you.
There's a time and a place for everything, and I'm here speaking because the board has decided that this is how I'm participating in public participation in what goes on in the county. I've been attending public meetings for well over forty years, and this gentleman has always been a spectacle. The idea that public vetting equates participation comes from some sort of parallel universe. To me, it's kind of like a guy standing at the base of the gallows, about to go up there, and he says, "What's your last word?" It doesn't make any difference, really, the guy's going to hang. Y'all are going to make the decisions that you're going to make. There's really, I can't imagine anyone being able to come up here and convince y'all to change your minds and vote away this different to what you're going to vote anyway. Plain fact is that speaking here really doesn't matter. There's no way that anyone speaking here is going to change anybody's mind. Now, there is public participation, and there is public participation, we, we actually heard a little bit about it here just a little while ago, when they were talking about the Water and Sewer Advisory Board. I believe I had citizens on it, didn't I? And airport, and whatever, and their committee. Uh, you know, I'm not here to, to really chat you, other than to say, this is a spectacle. This is not public participation. You want public participation, you want to do something a little bit different. You want to actually have the public participate. Commission formed, uh, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee on the Airport, too. I believe that was done by this, and I believe that was probably what, uh, came up with the, uh, Airport Authority's, uh, uh, you know, the, the new intergovernmental agreement, was that the work of that group was put together by citizens. Now, you know, there is an ordinance here that y'all got, that you, that you and you and you, and it's primarily for you, but it, this is really for y'all. It's called Section Two, uh, uh, NAMI and subsection three. And it's called, uh, let me just read it, because it's interesting. If any commissioner believes that further information is needed before the board can act on a main motion, he may propose that that motion be referred to a specific committee or department for further study. If an appropriate committee does not already exist, well, then a committee may be a part of that, formed as a part of that motion. Y'all can say, hey, well, this, this talked about this, but this talked about it in front of committee and whatever, where people can actually participate, come up with ideas, whatever. Now, this is going to do something, kind of delay maybe what you're doing, two weeks, four weeks, whatever, you actually have to come up with an ideal opinion if you want to do it. But that's public participation. This is spectacle. I'm just saying, y'all need to do public participation. I mean, you know, that's just the nature of the game, and, you know, rather than need, otherwise you wind up with a whole bunch of people up there acting like a bunch of thespians, just sitting there, "Hey, folks, hi, I'm Paul, like I'm..." You need to do something. Uh, if you want, if you're going to do it, do it right. Public participation means that you invite people to get on committees, and you invite people to participate. It involves the, the, the committee-making process that the county has. You can do it, or you can not do it, but if you want to do it right, you need to do it where you, where there's actual participation. That's really all I got.
I do want to clarify one thing, that the, uh, Airport Authority Steering Committee and the IBA Steering Committee did not come up with the intergovernmental agreement. But I'd like to go back just for a second to Ms. Byrum. I agree that I feel like those meetings should be out there at the airport. I, too, have seen a lot of things said, and tempers get hot, and people say things maybe that, at the time they say it, or do things that they don't really mean. They get passionate about something. I don't feel like we have any of our citizens that are involved for the airport or against the airport, that are terrible people, that are mean people, that are out to hurt anybody. I feel like, uh, we should move the Airport Authority meetings back out to the airport, where the IBA meetings should go. I'm not sure. The intergovernmental agreement was done, and people wanted to have some separation of some things, and I think we need to do that. We're paying those marshals here to be in here when they could be doing something else during that meeting. So if we've got to pay them to go out there to do that, I support that if that's what we've got to do. But I don't think any of, I, you commissioners up here have seen a couple emails sent to me that are pretty rough. But I still don't think that we have anybody for or against the airport that have very mean, terrible things in their heart to do to anybody. I will say that I've, I've seen the, the folks that are against the airport really pull together and come and do things in the community, great American cleanup, uh, work at different volunteer organizations, helping hands to help out. And, and I think it just gives us the opportunity, even though we may not agree on things, we can still have people come together that don't agree on things to do things for the common good of our county. But I think that's something that we need to look at is getting the meetings back out there to the airport where they should be held. And, uh, we've never had a problem out there with them and everybody's always been good and we've had the marshals out there, the four sheriff's departments and whatever we got to do, but I think they need to retake them back out there. I appreciate everybody's comments. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Second. Motion second, all favorite bands.